I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners for August 6, 2019 and invite you to stand if you choose while Commissioner Nash leads us in invocation and followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
If you would, please join me in praying to the God of your choice or none at all. Dear God, today may we be open to another's ideas and belief, respectful of our differences, but not threatened by them. May we grow an understanding of our own motives, knowing that people often act out of their own fears. May we be a force for replacing fear with insight, helping us all to be patient and kind as we talk. Strength, real strength can always find compromise. Working together may we find a common ground, enabling us to move forward with a shared purpose. May we see what is truly important and what unites us rather than divide us. Amen.
If you would, please face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll.
Commissioner Nash?
Here.
Commissioner Perigin?
Here.
Commissioner Beasley Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Denning?
Here.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Here.
I believe we have a couple of awards and recognitions tonight. I'd like to invite Operation Pride, I think. Mr. Henderson, are you doing this tonight?
Yes.
Come on, Mr. Henderson. You've got this.
I appreciate you all.
Glad to see you tonight.
Glad to see you.
Glad to have you.
Thank you.
All right, you all. So, thank you, of course, for the opportunity to present these awards to some very deserving community members, of course. We have the Beard family back here, and then we have Mr. Paye and then Mr. Wiseman back here as well. But we'll walk through this and I'll show you all their work. But to begin, my name is William Henderson. I'm the graduate fellow for Operation Pride, for those of you all who don't know. And then Operation Pride, of course, is not responsible, but we like to partner with the community in beautifying it and building pride within Bowling Green and Warren County. And the people who are winning awards today showcased that they cared and they wanted to build pride in the community. So, here we go. All right, so the first is the Beard family. We have Ms. Kathy Beard back here with her husband and then her son, William. They moved into this home, 800 Edgewood. It's been around since the 1940s. I wish you all could see these bigger. But as you can see, they painted their home, they did landscaping, a new roof, basically did everything that we were looking for. And hopefully, when their community members and their neighborhood members ride by and see what they did, they're motivated to do the same things. And then I have another picture of the front. As you can see, it's very beautiful. And then I have 535 Three Springs Road, which is the property that's owned by Wiseman and Paye. And it's actually, right now, Crossroad IGA is inside of it. So, you can see the changes that they made. And once again, they turned Isor and Bowling Green to something beautiful and put a local business in there as well. So, with that being said, I want to present these awards to the Beard family first. Ms. Kathy Beard, if you would like to come up here.
I'll make her come by herself.
Yes. So, Ms. Beard thought I was a scam when I first called her. So, she ignored my phone calls, which made me think that Operation Pride was pretty big time if someone was trying to do a scam of Operation Pride. So, I did all the communication with her son. So, thank you, William, of course. But I want to present Ms. Beard with this award. Took me a while to get this done for you.
Thank you so much.
There you go. Thank you.
Did you tell me that you found the plans for when it was built? From 1941, that it was Mitchell Lashard that built the home?
Yeah, we found the footprints in the house and had them framed and it shows the original layout. Something changed, but they had a lot of color. Probably spent way too much time.
I noticed you're hiding Dr. Beard when you said that.
It's beautiful.
Congratulations. Thank you.
All right. And then, secondly, we have the owners of 535, and that's Mr. Brian Wiseman and Mr. John Paye. If you all would like to come up here. Where's their hand claps? No one wants to clap? Here we go. All right, you all. All right, and that is all. If you all have any suggestions, of course, for the Pride Awards, you all can definitely reach out to me, call me. This is my first time presenting to you all, super nervous, but thank you all, okay?
Thank you, William. We appreciate it. And congratulations, both the Beard family and the other. We really appreciate all the work you do to make this a great community to live in. Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
I think we do have another award to recognize. Where'd Casey go? There he is. Come on up for a 911 center. That's another big announcement for police.
Absolutely. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Commissioners. Thanks for having us here tonight. Four years ago, now Lieutenant Colonel Delaney began the accreditation process for our communications center and was successful in making us the first dispatch center that was accredited through the Kentucky Association of Chiefs of Police through the state. Four years has gone. We've reapplied for our second accreditation, thankfully with the help of Lieutenant Colonel Delaney and dispatch manager Amelia Bowen. We've applied and successfully have been accredited for the second four-year term from the Kentucky Association of Chiefs of Police, and this will be hanging in our dispatch center, so.
Congratulations. See, that's a lot of work.
Thank you.
Will, you have something to add to it?
I just want to thank everybody for supporting the dispatch center and helping us with the training unit, professional standards. I mean, they really put in a lot behind the scenes, and this really helps get the public on what they do.
Thank you. That goes to show how much effort we try to do things with excellence around here. The police department's accredited, the 911 center's accredited, the fire department's accredited, Public Works is accredited. The finance officers receive the award each year for their presentation, so we try to do things well here. And thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Any other awards or recognitions?
We do have one with Parks. Brent Belcher, if he would come up and present his.
This is a recognition, I guess. We had our junior golf championships. Had the boys' championship on July 15th, the girls' on July 19th. And our third time, our winning for the third time in a row is Ms. Faith Martin. We wanted to bring Faith out. If we can bring her up and her coach, Coach Holman. I'd like to get some photos, if we could, with the board, if that'd be all right. This is, she's a junior and won it three times in a row, so you can see where this is headed. But we have the boys. It's Kaliya Kurd. He couldn't be here tonight, so we'll have a future date that Kaliya will be here from Bowling Green High School. But Faith from South Warren is the third-time winner, so congratulate.
Come up here in the well. Slide that chair over out of your way. I would've headed out of your way for you.
Am I in the picture?
Thank you.
That's awesome. Congratulations.
Congrats. Maybe I can get a lesson.
I want to autograph.
Yes, sir.
I had the pleasure of meeting Brent's mother-in-law the other day, and with that opportunity, I told her exactly what I thought about him.
Oh, man. All right, anything else?
I know he's in the crowd. Stand. Standing is in the crowd, too. I'd like to give a round of applause, recognition to Stan. He's been instrumental with the junior golf and the youth golf movement. I didn't realize Stan was in the crowd. Felt to recognize him, so I do want to give him due process. He's raised a ton of money, a lot of volunteers, and really is the linchpin of why we have a lot more energy in our junior golf week. And we're really making a 52-week program now rather than just a one-week program. Stan deserves the credit.
Thanks, Stan. We appreciate it. Been here a long time.
If you want to start something in Bowling Green, you need to get money. Call Stan in. Stan can get money from anyone in Bowling Green, Warren County. Good job, buddy.
Thank you.
Send a check over on Eastwood.
Anything else?
That's it, Mayor.
All right. First item we have is...
There will be a need for a closed session. Do we want to do that now, or?
Yeah, go ahead.
Ashley will read the reason.
Pursuant to KRS 61811C, discussion of proposed litigation against the city.
Moved.
Second.
Motion by Nash, second by Perigin. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. All right, now we have our, I think we're ready for our public hearing on the... Public hearing is, the purpose is to review the proposed fiscal year 2020 expenditure recommendations for the municipal aid program, which is called the Liquid Fuel Tax and Coal Mineral Service Tax Funds. Ms. Councillor, are you doing that presentation again this year?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. Not as exciting as the awards, but we do this every year. It's our annual, what we call our LFT, public hearing, which stands for Liquid Fuel Tax, also known as Municipal Aid Tax. And basically, it is our opportunity to publicly announce what we plan to use the revenues that we receive from the state for, at least at this time, what we plan to. There's a couple of different taxes that we do receive from the state, the first of which is the municipal aid tax, Liquid Fuel Tax, LFT. It is collected by the state and is collected on each gallon of gas that people purchase. So, the intent there is to redistribute that to communities like Bowling Green so that we can put that back into our road networks. So, for maintenance, for improvements, for different things of that nature. Real briefly, go through the project fund activity. Opening balance of that fund is $926,500. I work with finance and they provide what they anticipate the revenue to be, as well as any transfers from general fund. And that total is $2,417,300. This year, we're looking at expending $2,360,000, and that breakdown is on the screen here. Looking at $2 million for our annual overlay program, which is our paving program, $100,000 for our sidewalk rehab program, not to be confused with our new sidewalk program, and then another $260,000 for a new road construction. Given those expenditures, projected ending fund balance is $983,800. Go into those three things a little bit deeper. Our resurfacing program, you know, we look at every, look at our street network every year. It is actually inspected on a three-year basis. So, every street gets inspected by an outside firm every three years. So, then we go and look at their findings and drive all those streets. And this year, we have provided a list of what we feel like is our top priorities, about 20 miles of streets. That list right now, of course, is very preliminary. That list is in the hands of the utility agencies, primarily the agencies with underground utilities. So, we want to make sure they are good before we pave. If they've got a project, we'll hold or maybe they can accelerate their schedule to get that done. So, again, those streets that are to be paved, this 20 miles and $2 million, actually not only pave streets, we may have some rehab that we need to do on those streets. And as with every project, if we pave a street, we need to look at any handicap accessibility on the corners. So, if those are non-compliant, we add that to the contract. So, in this contract, I believe we had about 55 ramps that we would be replacing if those streets are paved. Sidewalk reconstruction. This year, the $100,000 hopefully will give us enough to build the Butler Way Sidewalk Rehab Project. We've been saving up for a few years on that. The reason that segment the sidewalk, it's in terrible shape. There's a lot of pockets of flooding, ponding. We're proposing curb gutter sidewalk, a storm system. Additionally, we purchased property with that money to kind of retain some stormwater, and that is in the area where we will connect to Pettigo Park, which we are about to build some new pass in Pettigo Park. So, this is a really good project. It's in need. It's just taken a few years to save up. So, those bids should be in this month. Fingers crossed, we'll have an awardable project and get that one done. So, that's the $100,000 for this year. The new roadway construction item, $260,000, is budgeted for a new entrance to Hobson Grove or Riverview Park. The need to kind of give a better accessibility into that park off of Veterans Memorial, as well as visibility to the park, is something we're looking at currently doing. So, 700 feet, not a long stretch, tying into Main Street where that comes into the park currently. Okay, then other tax that is collected by the state in a very similar manner is basically a tax on coal and mineral haulers. Those haulers drive through the communities throughout the state, and Warren County has been determined as an impacted county. So, some of that money comes back to Bowling Green to use for similar manners. So, we can use it to maintain our streets, for other transportation-related activities. And this year, the fund activity, basically, we have a fund balance. We always carry a fund balance. I'm still trying to wrap my mind around how finance does that, but you always want that. So, our fund balance this year is roughly $80,100. Projected revenue is $39,000. And at this time, we do not have any projects lined up for that money, leaving us with a balance of $119,100. In the past, however, that money has been spent. If we have a bad winter, we can use that on snow and ice removal. Those are kind of things we put away just in case those things happen. So, with that, that's the two items I wanted to relay to you guys tonight. If there's any questions, you can answer them.
I'll answer questions for Ms. Councillor.
When is the, what's the timeline for the entrance to Hobson Grove? Will it coincide with the opening of the...
Well, as of right now, we would need property to make that project happen as we see it. It would be located right along the edge of what used to be the Parr Makers Course. So, we would have to work with that property owner to make that happen. So, we have not gotten into any in-depth discussions on that. So, start of the fiscal year, we will start moving that direction. As far as, you know, if that can happen, the design is not a difficult one. Utilities don't seem to be an issue through there to any major degree, so.
Parr Makers does not own that now.
No. It transferred hands, I believe, and it would be just the edge, I guess, the far, I guess, eastern property line, whatever width we would need to get up to Main Street and tie back in. It would be a direct shot into the park, too. We could realign that where it would be, you know, Hobson Grove. It would open up that access on that end for not only the former Parr Makers lot, but also all those other properties right there, too. They would have another direct access point onto Veterans. So, we think it's a good project. You know, we'll see how that, those talks go and see where we get with that, but.
I think it'll be key for our driving range success.
I think, I think it's a great, I think Hobson Grove is hidden even to the people that live in Bowling Green. It's a hard way to get back in there, and the people that live along there, I mean, it'd be nice to just get that traffic off those roads and get them straight through there, so. Good project.
Sooner the better.
Any other comments or questions?
Any other questions?
This is a public hearing. Is there any member of the public that had a comment regarding the liquid fuel tax or the coal service tax? Hearing done, we'll close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Then we have the approval of minutes for our regular meeting on July 16, 2019.
I'm moved. Second.
Motion by Perigin, second by Beasley Brown. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. First item is municipal order 2019-120.
Municipal order approving the probationary appointments of Jonathan Brown, Michael Drake, Godfrey Hameese, Andrew Kilborn, Elijah Priyan, and Jamison McCall to the position of police officer in the police department. I'm moved.
Second. Perigin, second by Denning. Mr. Mizel.
We've just completed our last round of recruitment for police officers, and I'd like to ask Erin Holsey, our HR Director, to come present the recommendations.
Great. Good afternoon. This is one of my favorite things to do. So, we recently went through an extensive recruitment process, and we've received 154 applications, which is fantastic. Great thanks to Tiger Tulley and Human Resources, and Lieutenant Colonel Delaney, and the entire Recruitment Committee at Police. They work together, and they do a really excellent job getting us candidates. So, 51 showed up for the POPS test and took the PAI Personality Assessment. Forty-four of those passed the POPS test. We passed on 13 applicants to the background, and then we interviewed eight. And the six sitting before you are the candidates that we would like to recommend for probationary appointment for police officer. If you all would like to stand as I say your name, Jonathan Brown, Andrew Kilborn, Godfrey Hameese, Michael Drake, Elijah Priyan, and Jamison McCall.
Questions? Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Congratulations, gentlemen. You've got a very difficult job ahead of you. Stay focused. You'll make it. Thank you.
Those y'all, you take three of those, you got five, so.
Stay safe.
Welcome to be seated or ease out if you want to. Next is municipal order 2019-121.
Municipal order approving the appointment of John Carter to the position of Heavy Equipment Operator in the Parks and Recreation Department.
Moved.
Second.
Motion by Nash, second by Brown. Mr. Mizel.
An opening in Parks and Rec Department's maintenance, and I'd like to ask Erin to step back up and make her recommendation for filling this position.
Spring, we had a retirement of David Cardwell at the Parks Department. He's been with us for a long time, and so we took our time trying to find a proper replacement. John Carter could not be with us tonight, but he was selected amongst the candidates throughout the process. We ended up having 24 applications, and it kind of got whittled down. We had some internals that took some other opportunities. And so, he was the only candidate that we did end up interviewing at the end. But we did do a full interview process. We also conducted a practical field test where we asked him to use some of the equipment and kind of show some of the skills. The heavy equipment operator is not an entry-level position. This is someone who is also considered somewhat of a leader out in the field, so we wanted to make sure that he had some of those skills. And he performed very well in that practical field test. And John Carter has been a Marine. He has a Class A CDL, which is required for that position. And although he's not here tonight, we're excited for him to join our team.
I'll answer questions. Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Congratulations to John as well. Municipal order 2019-122.
Municipal order approving a contract through cooperative purchase with ARC Acquisition U.S. Incorporated of San Antonio, Texas, under Kentucky State Pricing Contract for the purchase of Panasonic ToughBucks for the police department in the amount of $531,675. I'm moved.
Second. Motion by Perigin, second by Nash. Mr. Mizel.
Police purchased these ToughBucks back in 2014. We are in need of replacing them. They are back, they're still on the Windows 7 operating system. So, we went out and looked and found these on, under state pricing contract. IT and police worked collaboratively on this. This money will be coming from the tech fund. We're going to purchase 125 of these Panasonic CF31 ToughBucks. They will also be able to integrate well with our new CAD 911 software that we're getting ready to put into play. And we'll be using Windows 10, which will also help with our security and coordinate better with the new devices and the whole CAD system. So, recommend your approval, purchase of these under state pricing contract for $531,675 from ARC, A R C, of San Antonio, Texas. Emily is here from IT, and nobody from police is in the room right now, but if you have any questions...
Another fellow there I don't recognize.
I believe Emily helped work on this.
Lynn's here, too.
Is it Lynn? I'm sorry, Lynn. I didn't see you. I just saw Emily.
Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2019-123.
Municipal order authorizing accepting bid number 2019-68 for Cisco SmartNet Annual Renewal from JBK Network Consulting LTD of Bowling Green, Kentucky, in the amount of $93,423.2.
So, moved.
Second.
Nash, second.
Another IT item I'm going to take a stab at explaining, but this is for our Cisco hardware equipment. We need an annual maintenance on that contract, so we went out for bid and we got two bids, or three. One was non-responsive, to help support our Cisco equipment and related software. We can't purchase this directly from Cisco. We have to purchase it from basically an authorized dealer, and these are the ones that bid on it. So, the lowest bid came in from JBK Network Consulting. We're recommending that bid at $93,423. Again, this will be paid out of general fund and IT budget to replace this equipment, this software, or due to this maintenance coverage.
Answer questions.
Have we worked with JBK before?
I believe we have many times. They're a local company that does good work for us.
The only thing I wanted to add, and it's a compliment to Lynn, who wrote the memo to the city manager about what exactly it is that we were purchasing, and it's one of the few IT memos I've ever read that I understood what these items that we were purchasing were going to do. So, I appreciate the layman's terms and the examples. The only thing you left out were pictures, and I don't expect that.
Comments? Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2019-124.
Municipal order authorizing accepting bid number 2019-72 for uninterruptible power supply replacement from Dean Dorton Allen Ford, PLLC of Lexington, Kentucky, in the total amount of $87,154.74. I'm moved.
Motion by Perigin, second by Nash. Mr. Mizel.
Okay, so this is another IT item, similar to, sort of, it's required, it's necessary, like the last item, operated all of our firewalls and switches. This item, what it does is when the, when we lose power, of course, we do have a generator, but there are seconds in between that matter, and those seconds are critical in protecting our data, not losing any data, server damage, all that sort of thing. So, this UPS basically is the device that kicks in in between the power going off and the generator kicking in that keeps us, keeps us up and alive. And so, it's time to replace this particular item. It's been, it's 12 years old, resides over in the annex in the main server room, and so we're proposing to go with Dean Dorton Allen Ford. They were the low bidder at the price of $87,154.74. If you have any questions, again, Lynn is here to answer those questions.
I'll answer questions?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I assume by the name, this is a car dealer?
I like how Lynn's going to actually take the question. That's awesome.
It's an attorney's office.
It sounds more like an attorney's office.
It is a professional, limited liability company. You usually see those on attorneys and CPAs. All right, please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
So, we got car dealerships bidding on technology equipment.
Versification.
Municipal order 2019-2125.
Municipal order authorizing accepting bid number 2019-70 for Clear Lane Enhanced Deicer from Cargill Incorporated of North Olmsted, Ohio, in the amount of $99,570. I'm moved.
Second. Motion by Nash, second by Perigin. Mr. Mizel.
Do you all know, we do occasionally get snowy, wintry weather here, and we have to keep a stock of deicer for our roads. Right now, according to the memo, we're at about 85 percent... Right now, according to the memo, we're at about eighty-five percent stock. And so we have an opportunity to lock in a price of ninety-nine fifty-seven per ton, per one thousand tons, per ton, at ninety-nine fifty-seven per ton. And so we're going to lock that in with Cargill, Inc., giving your approval tonight. And we have roughly seventeen hundred tons. We usually try to keep two thousand tons on hand. We won't buy another thousand, but we have an option to buy another thousand at that price. So recommend your approval to purchase this de-icer at the price that I think we locked it in for twelve months, I think Greg told me. So we'll buy, we'll buy it as we need it, but right now we'll probably go ahead and buy three hundred tons to get back to the two thousand level and see what the weather does and go from there. But we'll have the option to buy more.
Comment or questions? Call or roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order two thousand nineteen one twenty-six.
Municipal order authorizing accepting bid number two thousand twenty twelve for Pettigo Park Improvements, including an asphalt path and concrete sidewalk from Scotty's Contracting and Stone, L L C of Bowling Green, Kentucky, in the total amount of one hundred ninety-six thousand, two hundred fifty-two dollars and thirteen cents.
All moved.
Motion by Perrigen, second by Nash, Mr. Mizel.
Melissa alluded to this earlier. This is over in the area where we're doing some other sidewalk work. But this we paid for by C D B G money. And we went out for bid to do some work at Pettigo Park, do some walking paths, some sidewalks. And we got, we got three bids and we came in with Scotty's Contracting and Stone at one ninety-six, two fifty-two. And we're recommending to go with them. They're going to come in, excavate, put down the asphalt and aggregate and do it all erosion prevention, sediment control, even a crosswalk paint to make sure everything's safe over there. So we're recommending Scotty's for this project. Greg is here if you have any questions on this project.
Comment or questions?
One question.
Yes, sir.
Greg, Auburn Way will tee into, Auburn Way right now is a dead end, that dead ends kind of in what I guess would be Left Field. And the pavement just ends and then it goes to grass right into the park. Will there be any kind of barrier that will be put up at Auburn Way to prevent cars from thinking that they can now go forward since there is going to be a paved asphalt walking path that's going to be there? And I say this because I've seen cars try to come down the walking alley from Chestnut Street to State Street, which doesn't look like a place that cars should go, but they try to go. And I've seen them take to many paths that they shouldn't. I'm just worried about that.
We'll say I'm not familiar with that, but we could certainly add those bollards if we need to. Very similar, like you said, on Spring Alley or any of the places that cars could mix. Now, there is a connection where Auburn kind of, there's an open spot that's going to be connected up with path. So at least people will be able to walk all the way from, I guess that's, that College View Drive all the way through to the park, which is new now. They don't have it now. So it's really going to be a good connection.
I fully support the connection, just worried about cars thinking they can now access the park.
We'll make sure of that. I'm not sure, but we will make sure that's done.
Thank you.
It's not big enough on mine. It shows, it shows a bollard.
Oh, does it?
Okay. Now whether or not that's identified properly, I don't know.
Okay. I didn't see that.
You don't have, it's up here. I don't know if you get to that picture over here. Can you go that direction? Yeah, there is.
Oh, I see. Okay.
I think.
Okay. Thank you.
Comments or questions? Please call or roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order two thousand nineteen one twenty-seven.
Municipal order approving a contract through cooperative purchase with Kenny Machinery Corporation of Indianapolis, Indiana, under Kentucky State Pricing Contract for the purchase of two Toro thirty-five hundred D Sidewinders for the Parks and Recreation Department in the total amount of sixty-eight thousand, five hundred thirty-two dollars and eighty cents.
All moved. Second?
Motion by Perrigen, second.
Golf is in need of replacing a couple of mowers. We have two two thousand eleven Toros, what they call the Sidewinders over at Crosswinds that have some hours on them. We went out and found a good deal on the state price, pricing contractor list with Kenny Machinery. So we are proposing to buy two new Toro thirty-five hundred Ds. We're going to take the one, one of them from Crosswinds, take that over to Paul Walker. It's a two thousand, six model, John Deere that he'll be replacing at Paul Walker. And then the other one we're going to be replacing, taking it to Riverview Golf Course and replacing a two thousand five Toro and kind of hand me down. So these are priced each at thirty-four, two sixty-six, bringing the total to sixty-eight, five thirty-two. Again, from state pricing contract with Kenny Machinery. Recommend approval.
Comment or questions? Please call or roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order two thousand nineteen one twenty-eight.
Municipal order authorizing accepting bid number twenty twenty zero one for Fire Department Public Safety Supplies and Equipment from various vendors in an amount not to exceed one hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Second?
Nash, second. Perrigen?
We started, I think we started this last year and I want to commend FIRE for coming up this creative idea. Basically what they do is they go out and they list everything they're going to need to buy during the year. And they invite any and all bidders that supply these items. And these vendors bid on these items based on a discount under, I guess, what you would call an M S R P or what they call a manufacturer's published retail price. And so we did that exercise and before you we have multiple items and multiple vendors. We've got bids being awarded to nine different vendors here in, as you'll see in the memo and on the attached sheets. And so everybody kind of gets a piece of the pie. And on, towards the back of your packet for this item, you'll see the highlighted in yellow items that were being awarded to that vendor at the discounted price. And I think it's, this is a really good method. And again, I commend FIRE for putting this, this together. I think we started last year, I Jackson. And so we're going to recommend all these awards to these different vendors based on their discounts that they bid. So if you have any questions, Chief Coulson is here to answer those on these items. But I think total, total is roughly, we got budget a hundred and fifty thousand. We may or may not spend all of that, but we've got basically these prices locked in for all of these items.
I'm forty-two. Vendor agreements.
I hope so.
Any comments or questions?
I do, I do have one.
Yes, sir.
What did you do in the event of a tie? You know, when you had the yellow highlighted portions, you, you identified those in blue where you had a tie. How did you decide from there?
We looked specifically at those particular products and I think you're talking ladders. We awarded that to the company that we generally buy the apparatus where I bought trucks from, which the ladders generally come on the trucks. So we looked at each product group specifically to see what made the most sense. And that's really how we determined that, so. I think there were three product groups that had ties per se.
Yeah. Thank you.
Sure.
Comments? Call or roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order two thousand nineteen one twenty-nine.
Municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute a lease agreement with Bowling Green International Festival Incorporated to lease Circus Square Park and designated streets for September twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen, and further waiving the normal rental fees for the rental of Circus Square Park for this event.
All moved.
Nash, second. By Perrigen?
In your packet you'll see the letter from Kim Mason requesting the park rental fee waiver. Would like to, I will call your attention to item number ten and number seventeen in the application. Number ten basically will give you your days and times. Setup will begin on Friday, September twenty-sixth from one to six. Continue that Saturday, following Saturday morning, the twenty-seventh from six to nine a.m. And then the event itself will be Saturday, September twenty-seventh from nine to six. And then the teardown will begin at six, may take up to midnight on the twenty-seventh. And then on item number seventeen, under your street closings or street adjustments, State Street, Seventh Street to the lot, inner lane will be, inner lane will be closed on Friday from one o'clock on till nine o'clock on Saturday night. And then you'll see College, inner lane only, closed again from one o'clock on Friday to nine on Saturday night. And then on Sixth Street you'll have the park entrance that will be maintained clear width from Friday at one o'clock till Saturday night at nine o'clock. If you have any questions, Brent Belcher I think may be able to answer some of your questions or all.
Right there.
That's little Brent.
Little Brent left. Mr. Belcher, will there be any, so we, we end up closing these inner lanes a lot and for good reason. I support that. Don't misunderstand my question. Is there any way of putting some kind of signage that would be, say, you know, backed by the Fire Department as, as people are coming towards town that would indicate that they're getting ready to narrow down to one lane? A lot of times that narrowing happens, you know, kind of right there at the park. You get a lot of people.
I defer to my colleague from Public Works and police. It's really a collaborative effort between all the departments, but Greg, you have a recommendation on that one.
That's right. I misunderstood.
It's a state road there, so that probably wouldn't be closed.
Yep, we're not closing that. It was, it's, yeah. I apologize.
It does say six on there, but the.
We're keeping the little entrance right beside of the, what's the building called? I'm blank.
I know where you're talking.
The yellow building, D R A building. That little, where Heritage Trail goes in, that has to maintain opening so people can go in and out. And I think that's.
Loading and unloading.
Loading and unloading. I think that's what that's referencing.
Legala, I guess.
Just to keep that open.
All right. Thank you.
Other comments or questions?
I'm sorry I wasn't clear on that, so.
I was confused.
Call or roll?
Nash?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Excuse me. Yes. Municipal order two thousand nineteen one thirty.
Municipal order approving construction and accepting maintenance of Brentwood Place Subdivision, Sections two, three, and four.
All moved.
Second? Perrigen, second by Nash.
Brentwood is a subdivision out Russell Road on the right, past Hillview Mills. It's been inspected by planning and zoning along with, with our staff and ready to be accepted into the city. In your packet you have the letter from City Planning Commission addressed to Melissa and a list of the street names that will be included in Brentwood Sections two through four. If you have any questions on this item, Greg and Melissa are here.
Are there any comments or questions?
Are the sidewalks built? Yes, but the, but not all the housing is.
No, but most of it, most of it is. It's probably ninety percent built out, ninety-five possibly.
If any damage occurs to the sidewalks after we accept them in as a result of the building, who's responsible for the repair of that sidewalk?
Whoever tears it up.
Great. Thank you. Good answer.
And size, I appreciate that. Please call or roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. First reading of ordinance BG two thousand nineteen thirty-four.
Ordinance relating to classification pay schedule. Ordinance admitting the classification pay schedule G for general classified employees of the city of Bowling Green for fiscal year two thousand twenty.
All moved.
Second? Motion by Perrigen, second by Nash, Mr. Mizel.
Occasionally we have opportunity to look at our departments and organizational structure. And we have a retirement coming up in IT. And so we, we took this opportunity to look at Lynn's structure. And Lynn has done some creativity here with, with the reorganization, taking the attrition savings, using that toward creating two manager positions in IT. IT has never had any manager positions and he's up to ten or nine or ten direct reports. I can't remember. And so we have departments even smaller than IT that have manager level and more of a vertical structure. So we are proposing to take the savings of the attrition as it, when it occurs later in the year and hire back in at, at starting level and still net eighteen thousand dollars in creating these two manager positions in IT. And so we bring this to you. I think I sent it out to you a week or so ago to give you a preview of what we're recommending. But all of it's, it's, all of it's explained in the, the memo there from Erin to me. And we are requesting approval to create this IT manager position in the classification pay schedule and allow Lynn to create and hire or promote two IT managers when the vacancy occurs later in the fall.
Comment or questions?
Nash?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order two thousand nineteen one thirty-one.
Municipal order approving Department of Parks and Recreation sponsorship naming rights program.
All moved.
Second? Perrigen, second.
You'll recall at our fall retreat back in two thousand eighteen, we kind of brought this to you and asked for your permission to be a little more aggressive with our advertising, with our parks and golf and different programs we have in parks. And so Brent and his staff have put together a sponsorship, sponsorship naming rights protocol here that's in your packet. Basically what's being proposed is we allow for advertising at the golf courses at Crosswinds and Paul Walker, starting out to take offers for T marker advertisements. You'll see in the packet, there'll be some pictures of those, what they would look like, as well as a naming rights sponsorship on the new premier ground soccer fields out at Preston Miller. Brent's here tonight and can answer any questions about this program that, that's before you in the packet. We feel like it will generate some additional revenues for parks. From my recollection from long ago, there used to be advertisements on, on the T boxes from different companies, whether it be RC Cola, Coca-Cola, different, different ones. But we are proposing to bring that back and possibly take in up to five hundred dollars annually on a sponsorship and advertising. So Brent's here and can answer any of your questions.
I had a quick question. Are we offering naming rights or just advertising separately?
I would say a T marker is really just an opportunity to put, put your sign there. We're not going to call it the whatever, number one or number two, but their sign would be right beside the T box. On the soccer field, it would be whatever the name of the business would be, go ahead and be associated with the field. So it would be whatever, ex-company field number one.
I'm just, that's the only concern I have is that if you are maybe turning over who sponsors it year to year, it can get confusing when you're trying to figure out which field you're playing on. But I think if you're, they're still numbered.
Right. That's kind of the thought process. And obviously we're looking for somebody, a three-year, looking for a three-year, that's the original commitment that we're looking for through the process.
We've named some baseball fields, correct, and we still.
We have after.
Have them numbered in, whether it's minor league or major league field.
The, the baseball fields are after people in the, so, but this would be our first corporate sponsorship. And this was, I'll go ahead and answer my own question. Reason Riverview's not included is because it's not open yet. I wanted to have, obviously we knew we could do something in August. And Riverview won't be open in August and kind of give us something to look forward to in the future. Where would it go from here would be Riverview. Langton Park's new, new courts is coming. Would be another one be coming up in the next, next calendar year. We'll say we could add to the. We could add to this program. So we have some opportunities, and obviously, you've got Lover's Lane kind of sitting there too, so that might be the third option, we'll say. So I think we have some legitimate opportunities to look forward in the future as well. Thanks.
Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes, first reading of ordinance BG 2019-35.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning tracks of land containing 33.8695 acres from RM3 multifamily residential to RS1D single-family residential located at zero and 1854 Three Springs Road, presently owned by Spring Lakes LLC, care of James Stewart.
I'm moved.
Motion by Perrigen, second. By Denning. This is a first reading on the unanimous recommendation from Planning and Zoning. You remember, we voted last week on removing a requirement that released that lawsuit from being going forward, so we're ready to move forward on this part. Any comments or questions?
It's a single-family residence?
Yes.
Not, not multifamily.
With no access to Silver Springs subdivision?
Yes, sir.
Do we have stock inventory or numbers of, how many apartments do we have in Bowling Green, Warren County?
Yes.
How many do we have?
Question, I don't, I can't answer that right now.
That's fine.
Just over the past three years, countywide anyway, we approved over 4,000 units of apartments. But as far as the total number, I can't answer that tonight, but I can get it to you.
Okay. Thank you.
Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes, municipal order 2019-132.
Municipal order approving an amendment to the job development incentive program employees withholding credit agreement with SCA Personal Care Incorporated to change the company name to SCD HMS North America Incorporated.
I'm moved.
Perrigen, second. By Nash. Mr. Mizel.
This one's somewhat self-explanatory, but back in 2016, we did job development incentive credit to SCA Personal Care. They have undergone a name change to SCD HMS North America, Inc. And we need to amend the former job development incentive agreement to capture that name change, and that's what we're doing tonight. Katie, have anything to add to that?
Comments or questions?
Did they have any increase in the number of their employees or less?
No, no changes. There were no changes. It's simply just the name change. I believe they're getting ready to go active and start to take their credit, and the state wanted to clean it up and have the name change done before they authorized their end of it.
Questions? Please.
Nash?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes, municipal order 2019-133.
Municipal order authorizing the acceptance of a 2019 grant from the Kentucky 911 Services Board for 911 CAD system upgrades in the amount of $450,000.
I'm moved.
Second?
Perrigen, second. Brown, Mr. Mizel.
This item made, made me very happy recently. I think I got a text from Chief Hawkins during a meeting that we had just nailed down $450,000 out of a $3 million pot with the CMS Services Board. And I want to give Nick Cook and Amelia Bowen lots and lots of credit for working on this grant, and their, their people, their staffs. And I think there were 46 people, 46 agencies that got a little bitty piece of the $3 million, and we got 450,000 of the $3 million, which will be almost a fourth of our total project cost of the $1,896, so...
Sounds like you're bragging a little bit.
I am. This is pretty amazing stuff to me, and I just want to thank Nick and Amelia for all their work on this, and would wholeheartedly recommend you all accepting this grant.
There can't be any problem.
Just how many millions of dollars has your employee brought in for you, Brent?
Oh, yeah. Thank you for...
You know who, you know who my favorite employee is in your department, right? Any comments or questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Is, so this is the upgrade that we've been looking for that's going to make it to where people can text message and use other types of communication to communicate with you all? Is that correct?
Well, that's on the phone system side, which I'm working with AT&amp;T now, so you'll see that coming up soon. This is our CAD system that we input all the call information, track the responders, police and fire, animal control. It's really the most critical part of our dispatch center. And the one we have now is kind of behind its times, so this would replace that.
This is the one that's upgrading us so that we can then...
Texts come through the phone system, and that's a separate project. But this is kind of our data entry, call recording, unit recording status software.
AT&amp;T is the portal for the texts to come through before it gets into the CAD system, correct?
It will integrate into the CAD system. The phone system and the CAD system are separate, but the texts, when they come through, this system will allow them to pass on through, so we don't have to rekey it. Which our current system, we would have to rekey it once it came through the phone system. I hope that's not too confusing.
That's good. Thank you.
Okay.
Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning? Wilkerson?
Order 2019-134.
Municipal order authorizing the submission of a grant application and acceptance of grant funds from the U.S. Department of Justice, Bureau of Justice Assistance, Office of Justice Programs for Fiscal Year 2019, Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant for funds in the amount of $30,533.
I'm moved.
Second.
Second by Nash, Mr. Mizel.
Police Department would like to apply for this JAG grant, once again, in the amount of $30,533. It has no match required to it. We are going to, we have to share it. It's allotted between us and Warren County for the total of $35,333, so we'll split it. Our part, 15,267, we're going to use that for some purchases of in-car cameras for police cruisers. I think we're going to get three out of that. And then the county proposes to use their funds for fringe benefits for their DUI prosecutor in Warren County Circuit Court. So recommend approval to apply for this 2019 JAG grant.
I'm...
Chief Hawkins is here, if you have any questions.
Comments or questions?
When it comes to us and we write a check to Warren County?
Yes, we reimburse Warren County for their expenses whenever they provide documentation. We don't give them the entire grant upfront. We just reimburse them as they incur expenses related to the grant.
Up to that amount?
Yes.
And how many of our cruisers do we have in-car cameras in already, or is this something new, or just getting for three cars?
Understanding that we have approximately 60 in-car cameras in need of replacement, so this is going to allow us to replace three of those.
So we have them in all of them, and this is just upgrading. Okay.
Comments or questions? Thank you, Nick. Appreciate it. Put another 30 on his list so we can calculate it. Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning? Wilkerson?
Yes, first reading of ordinance BG 2019-36.
Ordinance amending Code of Ordinances. Ordinance amending Chapter 11 Finance, Taxation, and Economic Development of the City of Bowling Green Code of Ordinances to rescind Subchapter 11-7 Incremental Tax Revenue District, Heartland Development Area.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Nash, Mr. Mizel.
So all of you all know, since you're, you're on the Conventions Center Board, that we did pay off those bonds back in December. And with that, maturity of those bonds results in a sunset of our incremental tax district that was set up back in 2003 in, in the Heartland area. It's basically the front part of Heartland, the commercial area. So we are in need of amending Chapter 11 to basically get rid of that language. It's no longer valid. We did a similar thing years ago when the Corvette Special Tax District sunsetted. So basically, this is the sunsetting of the Heartland Tax District, and we are rescinding all of the language in Chapter, or Chapter 6, that, Chapter 11-7 to remove it.
And that wasn't an extra tax. It was a direct focus of the tax that came from that area to go to a certain fund.
There's a $2 million base back in 1991 that we calculated incrementally on every year and use that toward the Conventions Center bonds and, and things.
Comments or questions? Call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Public comment section. Only person to sign up tonight is Jennifer Moreland. Would you come forward, Jennifer?
I read the budget, and I want to commend all of four and the mayor. That's a change in the mayor, because he put in a lot of money on the transit. So I, I just want to commend the mayor for doing that, and we still need more funding for the transit. We still need to expand the transit. And the one thing, I'm part of life skills, job service, okay? And they have job coaches. And you give $30,000 to this unemployment office, but they don't have any job coaches. So I think we need to put in some money in the program the job coaches has, because the job coaches are working. And that's what would help people to find jobs. It worked, I worked at Walmart, I had a job coach, and it was successful. It was. They just couldn't stop me from being late. Couldn't stop me from being late, but he, they did keep me working for two years at Walmart. So that's how successful it is. And then I want to say to Beasley and Slim, keep the good work going, because you're doing a good job, you know? And I just want to say that I just wish this town wouldn't be so judgmental when it comes to public housing, because they're really judgmental, and people really need places to stay. So the towers and Section 8 needs to help people. They say they, they say they are, but what they're complaining is, it's a list of people, and it's either tons of people need help, or they're just saying that. So I would like for Slim and Beasley to work on the towers and public housing and see if they're really doing their job. So, and that's it. Thank you.
Our next scheduled meeting is August 20th, and we'll be going to close session without a vote coming out of it. Thank you.